All right. Tonight is May 25th, 2021. We have three things on the agenda tonight for the Hanson Zoney Board of Appeals. It's 7:00, 7:30 and 7:45 at 7 o'clock. We have Brookside Realty, 7:30, Rashdi Assad, and 7:45, we have an informal with Steve Rye. We're going to start with the 7 o'clock hearing, which is Brookside Realty Trust. I'm going to read the hearing notice into the record. The Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on April 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. At the Hanson Middle School of the MGL Chapter 48, on the application of the zoning bylaws, Section 6 HT and Section 8D, site plan approval of the town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section 7G1, and a variance of the town of Hanson zoning bylaws, 7B, Table of Dimensional Requirements, and Section 9B2A through C, to allow for the raising of the existing structure and construction of two 30 by 40 residential condominiums with associated site improvements and signage. Each building having two one-bedroom units at 1139 Main Street, map 43, lot 36A, Hanson's assessor's map, property is in the flexible overlay zone and commercial industrial zone. So this meeting is continued to tonight, to 5:25, 21 at 7:00 PM. I think Mr. Johnson's in attendance. I'm gonna allow him to talk. I think he's looking for a continuance, but go ahead. Mr. Johnson?
Can you hear me, Billy?
I can.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. So we're gonna ask, have to ask for a continuance because we just got the reports back from Merrill Engineering Group on the review about 12 o'clock today. And I guess Virginia hadn't gotten them because she wasn't in today. So I just wanted to log on and ask the board to continue this hearing to the maximum if possible.
All right, yeah, not a problem. Yeah, I think the last meeting, we kinda were optimistic and trying to get things done by this meeting anyways. So you're looking for a continuance? Let's see here. I think we have, what do we have? We have, we have July 20th or August 3rd. Which one works better for you?
July 20th should be good.
Okay, give me one second. July 20. All right. Do any of the other board members have any comments for Mr. Johnson? Mr. Perkins?
No, I don't have any comments. We'll have to see what comes back with the review, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Buckley?
No, it should be good right now.
Okay. So, Mr. Johnson, so July 20th at 7:00 PM, that, that, that sounds okay?
Yes, that works would be, and if for some reason it doesn't work with our engineer, Bob Crowe, I will get in touch with Virginia.
Okay, excellent.
Billy, I'll make a motion to continue to that set date and time.
July 20th at 7:00 PM? Okay, I'll second that motion.
So you want to do a roll call vote, Bill?
Yeah, do you want me to do it? So Kevin Perkins, because I've got a motion on the floor to continue Brookside Realty Trust at 1139 Main Street for July 20th at 7:00 PM. Do we have a second on that? I second that motion. Mr. Buckley?
Aye. You hear me? Aye.
Aye. All right, Mr. Buckley's an aye, so.
I'm an aye on that, Bill, Kevin.
Mr. Perkins has got an aye. So that meeting is continued. That motion carries. Meeting is continued to July 20th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Perkins and Mr. Buckley. Our next one's on, is on for 7:30. That is the one. That's Mr. Assad. So you guys could kind of mute your microphones, I guess, until then. And we'll wait till the 7:30 hearing.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, it's 7:30. We have Mr. Assad reading through the record. The Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on April 27th, 2021 at 7:30 PM at the Hanson Middle School and the MGL Chapter 48, in the application of Rashdi Assad for a special permit on the town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section 6HB and Section 8D, and site plan approval on the town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section 7G1, to allow for the operation of a convenience store with related signage at 1064 Main Street, map 43, lot 1, Hanson's assessor's map. Property is located in the flexible overlay zone and commercial industrial zone. This meeting was continued from 25, 25, 21 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Assad, are you there? Mr. Assad? Mr. Assad? We'll give him a couple of minutes, I guess. I saw him locked in, logged in as an attendee.
Hello?
Mr. Assad?
How you doing? Oh, I'm actually Freddie Assad. I'm representing my dad for, for this.
Okay. All right, can you, all right, so I understand you're looking for an extension?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you explain to us why, why you're looking for an extension?
Just because the landlord isn't ready yet. He had issues with the actual store. So we're just waiting on him, but on our side, we're ready. We're just waiting on the landlord itself.
The store, what, what store? The store you're trying to do?
Yes, sir.
What, what issues? Would you like to share that, share that with the board?
Not like, there's no like issue itself. He just, he might be selling the building, so we have to wait for him to decide if he's selling the building or not.
All right, understood, understood. And how much time do you think you're gonna need to figure that out?
So we spoke earlier yesterday to him, and he said he needs a couple more weeks. So I'm wondering if we can do another month's extension?
Okay, now let me ask you a question. So if we give you a month extension, well, actually, the next available date, I think we're booking August at this point in time. But understanding that when we grant you continuances, as you can see, we're booking into August, August. So, you know, what happens is you end up, you know, taking a spot where someone else that's ready would like to take it. Do you think either way, if we put you on for August 3rd, I mean, I'm sorry, August? Let me see, where are we at here? We have. Let me see what we have available. I'm sorry, I spoke. Yes, August 3rd at 7:00 PM. So do you think that is approximately what? That's about six weeks from now? Five weeks?
Yeah. I think that's more. You said August, we're in, we're in May.
Yeah, so May 25th, June. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's over two months out. So I guess the question is, if we put you on for that date, do you think you could give Virginia an answer either way, if you're gonna be ready? In other words, if the landlord is selling the building and you find out by, say, June 25th, then, you know, please let her know so we can open that spot for someone else. And, and if you're going to be heard on August 3rd, could you please make sure you have the appropriate documentation that we had asked for at the last meeting so we could properly get a meeting?
Yes, sir, I will.
All right, excellent. So I'll let, Mr. Perkins, any comments?
No, I would just, I would suggest that for the next meeting, I'd be prepared with any and all engineering plans that we requested after the last one, after the last hearing.
Yes, we, we actually worked on it. We're in the process of actually finishing it, but it would be pointless to go forward if the landlord decides to sell the building, and that, that's the whole. But we already have an engineer working on it, and we're in the progress of getting the prints done. Is again, just the, the conflict is if the landlord sells the building, then we have to communicate with the new landlord, and that's the only issue we have right now.
Sure, and, and if that is the event, as the chairman had said, I would highly suggest that you let us know that you can't meet that deadline, because then you're gonna have a lot more issues that you're gonna have to deal with, with the new landlord, and it's probably gonna take some time, so.
Yes, I, I, look, he explained, just in case if somebody wants to take the spot, he'll be more available.
Yeah, but we, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road, though. So I mean, we are gonna have to, you know, make a decision and go somewhere with this in one direction or another. So just, please, please keep us informed of what's going on with it. And then, as we had talked before, that, you know, parking is really the issue at this site. So we need to make sure that these parking spots that you had on your plan, that these are actually existing, that these parking spots actually exist, and they're not just drawn onto a plan. And then also that, you know that we're accounting some parking spots in the area next door to that building, that there's supposedly a deed at easement. We're gonna need, just, just so you can have it and be prepared for the next meeting, we're going to need a copy of that deed showing that you have whatever the amount of spots are you're saying you have. So we're gonna need all of that information. The, the parking here is very, very important in traffic congestion. So just really stress that to your engineer, please.
I got it, thank you, sir.
And I concur. All right, Mr. Praddy?
Yep.
Pretty well.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Praddy, I said, do you have any comments?
Oh, no, thank you, sir, I'm all set.
Josh?
I do not have any comments, guys. I think you guys covered it pretty well.
Mr. Buckley?
I agree. I think Kev went over everything pretty good. The main thing's the parking, and he just needs to come back with everything that we had asked for last time. So we're good.
All right. So August 3rd at 7:00 PM it is. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor to continue 1064 Main Street for Rashdi Assad to August 3rd at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Who's the second?
Sean Buckley.
So Sean Buckley seconds that motion. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
Sean Buckley?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, Mr. Assad, your meeting is continued to August 3rd at 7:00 PM. Thank you for showing up tonight and asking for the continuance.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
You too. All right. So, all right, we have outstanding business. Let's see here. Start with, all right, we have an informal hearing. It was scheduled for 7:45 with Mr. McCory, I think, and Stephen Rye from Land Planning on the address Liberty Street. Sorry. I'm not sure of the exact address, but Mr. Rye, are you there? Let me log him in. A lot of talk. All right, Mr. Rye?
Can you hear me okay now?
I can.
Okay. So Tim McCory, who owns McCory Automotive, it's on East Washington Street currently, picked up a piece of property that was formerly owned by the town across from, kind of a kitty corner across from the middle school. It's between 56 and 84 Liberty Street. It's a vacant piece of land right now, and it's 45,000 roughly. It, it has one non-conformance as far as the zoning is concerned with the frontage. So he's got 146 feet of frontage. He has talked with the abutter to the north, who's got the existing contractors, yeah, there, in building, to try to get the extra four feet he needed for frontage to comply with 150-foot frontage in the business zone. He was not able to get anywhere with them on that. He wasn't interested in dealing with them on that. So that would be one of the first items we wanted to discuss with you. Where it does not comply now, we would obviously be seeking a variance from that requirement. And in addition to that, the building, we're proposing 6,800 square feet, which is the, the 15% of the actual allowed, actually, it's 15% building coverage, which is what is allowed in that district for this size lot. And Tim wanted to get a 60-foot wide building in there because of the little bit less frontage and the angle of the lot going back. He really is not gonna be able to get that in there unless he gets some kind of waiver on what we were gonna request is waiver of the buffer strip on the left-hand side, because he'd like to put the building up within about 16 feet of the property line. And that, we would repress that waiver. And on the other side, a waiver of five feet of the 15-foot buffer to allow him sufficient area to get his tow trucks in and out of there and be able to access the overhead doors. So those are the, those are the two items we wanted to talk to you about tonight and, and see what input the board had for us on those. And any other items you want to bring up based on the concept we put before you?
All right. And Mr. Rye, is Mr. McCory, does Mr. McCory want to speak at all?
He should be here tonight, do you see him?
I did, let me see if I see him. Steve Rye, blah, 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 blah. Well, yes, I do. Mr. McCory, would you like to speak?
The, actually, Steve's been doing a good job so far. There's not much more I could add to it.
Okay, all right.
Like you said, if we could get the building over as far as we can to the left, it would give us a lot better access for parking vehicles and bringing our trucks between the building and parked vehicles. That was my meat.
All right. And now, is there anybody, is there anybody else here, abutters, that want to speak on this informal hearing? And if you do, can you please raise your hand? It's in the bottom of the, bottom bar on the window. It says raise hand, just click on it if that's the case. All right, I take that as a no. All right, so I guess I'll start. So I just, you know, just, I just wanted to put on the record myself personally. Mr. Rye, I had spoken to you a few months back. You had called me for some insight in regards to some direction on this project. We had spoke about you had a frontage issue and you would need a variance. Additionally, I thought you had a lot width requirement for the first 100 feet to maintain the 150 for the first 100. I didn't hear you talk about that. Is that, is that not an issue?
No, that, that is awesome. Yeah, I didn't include that, because we were, what we were trying to do when taking that four foot from the abutter is to have a four foot go back 100 feet and then tie back into the property line. And I, you know, we did produce a plan for Tim to go and show him. So it amounted to like 440 square feet we were looking for. So that would have taken care of that 100, 150 foot at the setback line, too. So I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up specifically, but I think that's why I wasn't thinking about it. But yes, that, we do not meet 150 at the setback either.
So you would need two variances?
Currently, yeah, yeah, that's right.
All right, so you would need a variance, you need a frontage variance, and you would also need a variance for, to maintain the frontage, which is 150 feet for the first 100 feet?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I wasn't sure if something changed when you did a survey of it or. So yeah, so again, so I just want to put the record that we had discussed this a few months back, and you had talked about potentially talking to the abutter, the abutter to the right, Mr. Sheen, I think it is. And obviously, that didn't come to any, you know, fruition, fruition. So I think, you know, I think those, you know, beyond getting into, this is my opinion, beyond getting into what type of building and waivers you'd like, like I, I think we had discussed, I think the biggest obstacle for you at this point in time, in my opinion, is gonna be trying to, you know, convince the board via hardship that you're gonna, you need a frontage variance and and a lot width variance. So that was our conversation. I didn't want to put that in the record. That's my position. I'll let the, the board speak, because I know we've discussed this, but they haven't actually gave you their thought process on it. So I guess I'll start with Mr. Perkins.
Hey, everyone. I just want to, right out of the gate, just disclose, I myself did actually put in a bid on this property when it went out for sale bid. So if this does come in front of us formally and filed, I won't be voting on it. So I'd just like to disclose that to everyone. What I know about it, it doesn't meet the lot width requirement, maintaining the required frontage. It would need a variance on that, as Bill had mentioned. It doesn't have the required frontage. It would need a variance on that. I believe a portion of it, or maybe the whole thing, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's in an aquifer protection district, a zone two possibly. So I'm not sure that even what the allowed uses would actually be allowed for that. And I think we already have a problem kind of down the street there where JJ's used to be with heat paving, kind of running a store job out of there. I, I mean, I guess anything's possible, but that's what I know about it. The land to the left is for sale or was for sale. So I mean, it could be combined with that, so I wouldn't really, in my personal opinion, I wouldn't really see any possible hardship there. I mean, the property was auctioned off and sold, you know, how it sits now. And it was disclosed by the town that it didn't meet the required frontage. So that's, that's all I can really say about it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Praddy?
Hi, guys. So this is kind of my first, um, first look at this, real hard look at this. So bear with me for a minute. I.
Take your time.
You know, as, as Mr. Perkins stated, you know, the lot clearly doesn't meet the width requirements. And I think asking for the variances and waivers that you would be asking for would be a bit of a stretch. So I know you attempted to speak to the neighbor to the right about buying a piece of the land. Would it be possible to contact the, I believe it's the Dyer, the Dyer property about purchasing a piece of their land?
Can I steal it?
That was a question.
Yes, I believe Mr. Dyer has about two feet spare. Still wouldn't be enough.
Yeah, I'm just seeing this as a bit of a stretch at the moment. But, you know, anything's possible. So.
All right. All right. That's it, Josh?
Yeah, I think that's it for now.
All right, thank you. Mr. Buckley? Just to keep it simple, I mean, basically what they said, that when, you know, coming into it, it was stated by the town, and it didn't meet the requirements. And then, you know, you're coming in knowing that, buying it, and coming in, knowing that there's a hardship to begin with, and then kind of asking for a variance on two things, knowing that that's what you're getting, right when you buy it from the beginning. I mean, you can't just, you don't want to set a precedent. I mean, you want business in town, but you also don't want to set a precedence to where you can start having people buy up things in town and think that they're just gonna get multiple variances for hardships when they knew what the hardship was to begin with. So.
So you're saying it, it's, it's not possible for anybody to get a variance for, for anything?
So Mr. Sean, let me, let me answer that. So Mr. McCory, so yeah, this, so I guess what he's saying is that, so what he's saying to you is that, that when you had bought the property, you knew the issues that it had, right? You were aware that it had a frontage issue. You were aware it had a lot width issue, right?
Right.
So what happens is, basically, you created your own hardship by acknowledgement of knowing that when you purchased it and kind of thinking that the, you know, after you bought it, that they would say, you know, yeah, we understand you knew that, we're gonna, we'll, we'll grant you these variances. And not that we don't grant variances, but each variance and each property and each application is site-specific on the cases we grant. And, you know, I would say, you know, 75% of the time there, or more, there to pre-existing uses that don't have the latitude that new construction has and, or new development has. And that's why, so again, when you ask the question about variances and do we grant variances, the answer to that question is, we do. But we do each, we do look at each application uniquely and on its own merit. And based on, I think what you heard from the board is that you bought this with the acknowledgement that it did, it did need variances. And that's, that's, that's their thought process. If I could just follow up on that, I'm not saying it's an automatic denial, but it's definitely a strong thing to think about when we're considering it, is what I'm saying. And, you know, and it's kind of like, it's almost like an automatic thing where I feel like you're hoping the board's just being nice guys in a way, if I'm just being, you know, very frank about it. Yeah, so.
So the board's not nice guys, is what you're saying?
No, the, the, the board, the board.
I get, I know what you're saying, I'm sorry.
The board will be people that take things into consideration based on all the aspects of what we're looking at. That's what I'm saying.
He's being facetious.
Oh, I know. I'm sorry. So when I talked to the building inspector, the first time I'd been on this with actually Mr. Perkins, he, he explained to me that he didn't think there was gonna be a problem trying to get the variance. As a fact, he said, I'll even go down with you and help you get the variance. This is, yeah, that was great. So I figured, well, this is, sounds pretty good. He said he didn't think there was much of a problem with just the four feet. Says especially moving our business from where it is now up the street, thought it would be a great fit.
Yeah. Hold on for one second, I think I have a comment. Mr. Perkins, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, what it is, it's real just specific, like Bill said, just really to the situation in the site. Like you said, we do, we do grant variances, definitely. But a lot of them are to, you know, pre-existing non-conforming that already, they already have some sort of structure or use on the property. Vacant land is just, it's very tough. We did have one recently that was a retreat lot for a single-family dwelling that was short, I think, about a foot, Bill, foot and a half, I think we had.
Love that.
That, that, the, the reason, you know, we can't really hang our hat on it. Really hang our hat on it, on a personal level, we want to, but on a zoning level, we can't because. It just opens up the floodgates to everyone else that there's really, there's no justification to to grant that variance. That every single person in the town of Hanson could line up, and they'd come in and say, you know, where's mine too? Um so, I mean, if this, if this property is based on, you know, your history and the research of it, if you can go back and you can. You know, find a reason as to, you know, that this property meets a certain requirement, or it did at a certain time, or it's. You know, it predates zoning, something along those lines that might help your case. I'm not saying it's, you know, it's definitely going to, but it, it would be good to at least know the history of the property and where it came from. As far as what, you know, where it was carved off of, and I'm sure Steve Ryan knows what we're talking about with that sense. Um and he can probably help you, you know, research.
I understand, um so you think if I, if I went back and found there was, there was a building on that property at one point or anything like that? Would help, I mean.
I, I just, I, I mean, it's good to know the history of it, it's not, you know, it, it's not. A hundred percent that it, that's completely important and we're gonna hang our hat on that, but it's good to know, you know, where something came from and. You know, wha- what it is and how it got there. You know, w- w- we just can't look at it as, say you had. A big piece of property today, and you took off a piece of it, and it was non-conforming, and then you came in for a variance on it. But if there was a reason at some point in time that that was once a conforming property, and then there was some sort of hardship, someone lost the property, their taxes or whatever. It, it's just, you know, it's good to do your research on a property and find out where it came from. Um I mean, with, with that being said, that, that, you know, that, that could change something, it could be completely irrelevant, it just, uh if it was me, that's. I, I would wanna know at least the history of the property, um so at least I know what I'm talking about and what I'm referencing. You know, when I'm talking about the property, that's all.
I, I understand, I understand, thank you for that.
Uh Mister, Mister Praddy, do you have a comment? Josh, Praddy?
Bill. My hands raised?
No, your hand was raised.
Oh, that's news to me.
Oh, sorry. It was not?
Uh no, it was not, um but I've just been peeking through the uh, the bylaw. In uh respect to this particular property, um and it seems as though. There may be more conflict than we originally thought. And I, I'd like to bring your attention to section six D one. It's uses permitted subject to plan, uh site plan approval. Where such use does not have uh any of the following qualities or attributes. And there's one that says here, a building footprint in excess of five thousand square feet. Which the proposed property is um showing sixty-eight hundred, I believe. Um there's also another subtext here about storage of hazardous materials. Which um, if I'm not mistaken. An automotive repair shop would be storing some sort of hazardous materials from time to time.
Yep. So Josh, um Mister McCory, do you wanna comment on that?
Uh as far as the hazardous, hazardous materials, um most things today are, you know, we, we can have them vaulted. So if there was a spill, it would be contained, I mean, I'm not concerned about the, and hazardous waste, uh. Engine oil is probably the most hazardous that we use, other than like a brake clean, which is in a can, I mean, there's not a. Not a large amount of anything, really, as far as hazardous waste.
Well, I, I think what he's saying is, I, I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and look at it, but Josh, are you looking at that from the uh zoning regs? Or part of the zone, the overlay with the zone two?
Uh this is of the zoning.
Under the well protection, I think it's under the well protection section, isn't it?
Yeah, under the zone two, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well protection, I believe.
Yeah, so Mister McCory, so I think, and Josh, I, I don't mean to uh speak for you, but is that what we're talking about?
Yes, it is.
Alright, so you underst- so you understand there's an, there's an aquifer overlay, um a portion of that area is in the zone two. And there are certain allowed uses permitted in that zone, Mister McCory?
Yes.
And one of them being is, it doesn't matter what type of oil or, you know, I.
I understand, I don't know what, if Steve Ryan is still on, and i- if he knows much more about this than I do, cuz I don't know a lot about that.
Yeah, again, Bill, when I commented, I, I think it is, I'm not sure, I don't know for a fact, maybe Steve could, you know, comment on that. Um but I think that was, that was a good point to bring up that Josh had mentioned was just that, you know, towing crashed vehicles that are leaking fluids and stuff like that.
Yeah, those would be inside, anything crashed, leaking fluids would be inside on cement and uh. Of course, we have spill kits and stuff to deal with that.
Understood, Mister, uh Mister Rye, you there?
Yeah, I'm still here, yeah.
Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, I can, uh as far as the zone two, this site actually does not fall in the zone two.
Okay.
Um so, uh the, that wouldn't apply, but as far as the size of the building. We, we exceed five thousand square feet, there's also in that same uh section D seven. Uh sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Allows by special permit, a use that exceeds any of those thresholds he was talking about, which is the size of the building. So obviously, we would be requesting a special permit.
Understood, um. Understood, yeah, and that's why I kinda, I didn't get into the, the other things. Um at the beginning of this, because I didn't think at this point in time, it was even worthwhile of, you know, getting into what aquifer may or may not be in or. Um what uses are allowed or not allowed, I just think that your first obstacle, like I said, are your variances, and you need two of them. And I think that um you're in front of us for an informal hearing tonight, and I think it was uh important for you to get a gauge. On the board, um granting those variances, um in terms of the other things, things allowed by a special permit. Are not allowed by special permit, those are site plan. Approval specific and also by special permit, um so I mean, those. Would be if you got past the first two obstacles, which are variances, um and that's why I just primarily wanted to discuss those. Um so, I think you kinda heard the board, is there uh any of the, any of the board members that wanted to comment in regard to those variances? I think those are kinda the, um the big ticket items that he's gonna need to overcome before he even gets into design issues. Were there any other comments?
Yeah, Bill, I mean, I, I, I'd just like to, to point out, just to be upfront, like I said, I, I wouldn't be voting on this. But as long as I've been on the board, I don't believe we've granted um a variance for a complete new construction, I know we have for. You know, reconstruction and repairs and things of that nature, redevelopment, I guess is what we call it. But nothing, um you know, basically a, a treat vacant lot for new construction, I'm not aware of anything that. That we've done that on since I've been on the board.
Yep.
I just, you know, I don't wanna see someone moving forward in, in, in hopes that, you know, they're gonna get the decision they want, that's just upfront. You know, that's kinda my, my position on it, but again, like I said, I won't be voting on it, so.
Yep.
I would be recusing.
We appreciate your comments, um and uh Mister Praddy, uh no other comments?
Uh no, not at this time, thank you.
Mister Buckley?
Uh no, I think we're all stepping on.
Alright, so uh Mister Rye and Mister McCory, do you have any other questions for the board before we wrap this up?
Uh I don't, but I, I will say, we will look back through the history of the lot and when it was created and the, the zoning that applied at the time. And try to come up, see what we come up with in that respect. And then, I don't know if Tim's got any more questions.
Actually, no, I don't, uh no other questions, you made it pretty clear, and I think we'll go back and do a little homework and. And revisit the board.
I appreciate it, thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate uh you uh hearing us tonight.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Alright, so um pianist, you there?
All here still.
Alright, excellent, so um I think we have uh some business to um attend to in the um, the. We have a continuance on the V C A, uh I'm gonna read that into the record, I think it did a continuance into July. This is dated um, May seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. Miss Costley, due to delaying the uh installation of our gas line, the V C A Animal Hospital Inc. Hereby request an extension of the special use permit described below through July thirty-first, first, two thousand twenty-one. We are confident we will be able to open a new location within the requested time. Please feel free to reach out to me directly if anything more is needed in this matter, thank you very much for your consideration. And your help with proceeding with this request, um I, I don't think it's an issue, I think um. You know, based on my observations, they've been doing, certainly their due diligence, they're moving along, they're doing a great job. I think they need a few more months, and I think um I'm more than happy to grant that continuance, so I'm gonna put a motion on the floor. To grant that continuance um to July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. For the V C A Animal Hospital. At, I don't have the address, but um the original case was nineteen J A zero one. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that, Bill, it's Kevin.
Alright, and uh any discussion?
The only thing I'm thinking is, I mean, should we give him, you think you should give him an extra month, just so, you know, if they get hung up on something that they don't have to? I'm just thinking, maybe should we give him to, you know, August, or, I know they, he asked to join, I'm just thinking so they don't, you know. They don't have to rush something together, they've definitely, like you said, they've been making very good progress over there, Bill looks great. Um looks like they've been diligent with everything, just to kinda cover them, you know, that's all.
Yeah, so why don't we, you're right, Kev, why don't we give him to August thirty-first, it's the Tuesday, that should give him ample time, I guess another month. Um alright, so, alright, so again, so let me uh revisit that motion, so we're gonna continue to Jill um. August thirty-first at two thousand twenty-one, and Mister Perkins, you second that motion?
Yes, I second that motion.
Alright, I'm in discussion, anybody else? Alright, um so. I guess I'll put a vote on the motion, Mister Buckley?
Aye.
Mister Perkins?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, alright, the motion carries, the V C A is continued to August thirty-first. Um and lastly, we're gonna close out the meeting. I put a motion on the floor to close out the meeting, uh tonight's meeting, which is May twenty-fifth, uh do I have a second on that motion?
I second the motion, it's Josh.
Uh Mister Praddy seconds the motion, any discussion? Alright, I'm gonna put a um. Put the, the, the motion to vote, um Josh, you're a.
Aye.
Um Mister Perkins?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, alright, meeting's closed, alright, so um you guys have a good night, and I will see you at the next meeting.
Have a good night, guys.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, guys, good night.